We'll get started. MJ, you're here, right?
Yes, I see.
I saw, I thought I saw.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, cool. Okay, so let's get started with tonight's meeting. We'll start with the public agenda. First, we have Donna Johnson to talk about the motorcycle show coming up at the Cultural Center. Hey, Donna. You're muted.
Yeah.
There you go.
We're really excited to have a motorcycle show on July 3rd. And we're hoping to be able to close the street for just a short, maybe half a day. On July 3rd, Saturday, July 3rd, from North Washington down to 385.
Okay.
And we want to do a couple of things. One is we're working with the library's robotics team. And they've been, the robotics team has been tasked with coming up with robots that either resemble some sort of motorcycle, either a three-speed or a trike or something like that. And then what we're going to do is the first part of the day, we're going to have them do their demonstrations in a square on the street. We'll tape it off or find some way to do that. And then like say like three, maybe like 2:30, we're still working out the times. But then after that, we'd like to series of people come in with our motorcycles so they can park there and people can wander around. We can park bikes maybe on both sides of the street. People can wander around, look at the bikes, and then we'll call it a day and send them off to all of our restaurants.
That sounds good to me. Yeah, I'm actually very excited. I got to save the date in the mail a while ago, so I'm looking forward to this. And I don't think, we got the application. Yeah, here it is. So we'll be addressing that in a few minutes, the application to close the street, so.
And the exhibition will go from July 3rd to August 22nd.
Okay.
And we're also hoping to have some other events, perhaps a couple of movies at different points during that six weeks that it's open.
Okay.
And we'll kind of bring ideas to the board as we, as we go along.
That sounds great.
Donna, I have one question for you.
Sure.
You said closed North Washington to 385. Did you mean North Franklin?
I'm sorry, yes.
North Franklin.
Thank you, Nancy.
I was gonna say, yeah.
It's on the application.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, North Washington. Thank you.
Sounds good. That sounds good. Thanks, Donna. Anything else now? Or you want to just wait until you have it more and come back with other?
Yeah, we're still ironing out the movie dates and we're hoping to do projections in the park.
Cool. Very cool. All right, thank you. Next up, we have Tara Donadio. I hope I pronounced that correctly. From Capital District Regional Planning Commission on clean and the Clean Energy Community Program, which we are, were recommended to look at by the Conservation Advisory Council. So welcome Tara.
Hi, thanks for having me.
Before Tara starts, could I do a two-minute introduction?
Sure, Josh.
So just as a reminder, the village, two years ago, we became what's called a Clean Energy Community. And that was by accomplishing a number of high-impact actions, so-called. And as a result, we ended up being eligible for a $30,000 grant, which we were able to use to do some underground infrastructure repairs. I think they were done last fall. Maybe they're still continuing or finishing this spring. So that program has come around for around two. And it's basically you accomplish these actions and you get points. And when you reach certain point levels, you get cash. There's, it's not competitive, but there's a limited amount of cash available, so it's first come, first served. So the Conservation Advisory Council and Tara and her associate Jill, we've been looking at these various actions. And we've come up with a series of actions that we think might make sense for the village to attempt. And if we attempt them and are successful, doing the math, it looks like we could get up to $40,000. That money has limited uses. It needs to be used to, for projects that can reduce energy or improve energy, reduce energy use or improve energy efficiency. And so if a thing, one thing might be if we were looking to buy another fleet vehicle, and we wanted to buy an electric vehicle, could go for that. But the other thing that the Conservation Advisory Council thought of was that it can be used for building retrofits. So that the, the Cultural Center, it could be used for that. It could be used for the building on North Washington Street that we're possibly going to be getting as part of a deal with state parks and scenic Hudson, or if our plan to sell the community center falls through, it could be used on that. So the purpose of this presentation by Tara on the various items is to educate the board on what this involves. And it would be helpful to get kind of a sense of the board that we do approve this so that I and the Conservation Advisory Council can move forward with staff and with the technical advice of Capital District Regional Planning Commission to essentially get these impact, actions accomplished, get the points, get the money. And with that, Tara, did you want to do a presentation, Tara? Do you?
Yeah, actually, if you don't mind, I, it looks like I'm not able to share my screen.
Yes, let me see. I think if you try to share, then I can say allow you to share. Nothing popped up, though.
Yeah, it says, it just says host disabled participant screen sharing. So I'm wondering if there's like a setting or something. The visuals, I think, would be helpful, so otherwise I wouldn't.
Amy, you may need to go into into the, like, the website, the Zoom website, and modify the the other thing Tara, is if it's a simple PowerPoint and you want to email it to Amy, she could perhaps open it and then just, I assume Amy is going to be able to share the screen, so.
Yeah, let's give that a shot.
Yeah, I see. I can't even, I tried to share my screen and I can't.
Is it Amy Sorago at Athens Village, New York?
Is correct.
Awesome. I just want to make sure I've got them right.
I'm not sure if I can change it while we're in.
Amy, are you able to share your screen?
Yeah, I've done that before, but I've never had to let someone else do that. I'm not sure I'm able to change it while we're already in the meeting.
Are you, are you okay with having Tara email you?
Okay, I just sent it over, Amy. So you should see in just a second. Well, while it's sending, I can, I can start talking just for the sake of time. Beginning slides are pretty basic, I guess you could say. So as Josh mentioned, the, the village was previously designated as a Clean Energy Community. So NYSERTA has this program that was released in 2016. The first round of the program went for a few years until it ran out of money. The village got one of the very last grants that were actually in the state. And the way the program worked the first time was basically there was 10 action items and you had to just do four of them. And once you did four, any four, you got the grant. And if there was grants available, you, you kind of fall in line until they're all, until they're all gone. So the money ran out of that program and then they developed a second round, just basically because the program has been so successful. This round is called the Leadership Round. So it's structured a bit differently. Communities that haven't participated can still do four actions, but they only get $5,000. Whereas the, the village got, I can't remember, Josh, was it, was it $30,000? I want to say. Sorry. I'm asking you and you're on mute, but I want to say that was the amount. So the amounts are lower for just the basic designation grants now, but there are other opportunities. So the one would be, basically, the way that it works now is that it's every action is attached to a number of points. The more difficult the action, the higher the point level. So you want to shoot for some, some high earning point ones, but you also want to just check off the ones that you've done already. So the good thing about the program is it does give you points for those actions that you already accomplished in the last round. So the village is actually coming into this with, I think it's 900 points. Nope, 1,000 points. So that's actually a lot more than a lot of communities that I know have, and that's because you guys already switched out your streetlights. So that was, that was a really big action that they rewarded a lot of points for. Amy, did it come? So I think it's helpful to have that for, as I go through the actions. Perfect. Awesome. So if you could skip to slide three.
Sure.
I will start there. So as I mentioned, there's these points that are associated with the actions. And you can see here, you know, kind of everything that's, as it's laid out, the different types of things. A lot of these actions were around the first time the program was announced. A few of them are new things that the state is trying to, you know, help communities do. So things like New York Stretch, or there's this clean heating and cooling demo, so they're trying to promote heat pumps and things like that. So that, this is just kind of a layout of the point structure. If you can go to the next slide. Thank you. So I'm just going to kind of go through some of the points here. As Josh mentioned, there's, there's a few that I'm just going to skip because I think that it's good to just focus our attention on some of the ones that the village already shows interest in. Because there is a lot of things with this program and it can get overwhelming if you aren't already overwhelmed. So the first one here is Energy Code Training, which you would have completed the first time around with the program. This does have to be completed every year, though, so that's why the points didn't roll over for this one. Unfortunately, the trainings aren't going to be available to fourth quarter this year because of, because of COVID and they need to do these in person. So as soon as those are announced, I would assume the village would, the code enforcement officer would want to take this free course again, and you'd get 200 points. Next slide, please. So the next one, I actually put this one in here, even though it wasn't on your list, Josh. I'm sorry, I snuck one in here, but I just wanted to make sure that we covered this one. This is a 10% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from any energy upgrades. So if there was anything that the village did after January 1st of 2020, like LED lighting upgrades or installing a new heating system, this very well may get you 500 points. So that's something we can talk about, but it's definitely worth looking into because it's a big point.
I'm wondering if anything in our DPW building might qualify for that. We, we just unveiled a brand-new DPW building.
Okay.
And, but I don't know, I don't remember when we did it, that we talked about specific clean energy attributes, but we can look at that offline.
Okay, great. Next one, please, Amy. So the next one is LED streetlights. So you guys already did the conversion of your Cobra headlights. Now you get more points in this round for actually doing the decorative fixtures as well. Now, was that something, Josh, that you guys had, had, do you have decorative fixtures in the village? Or did you purchase your lights for the first round of the program? Or did you do a utility conversion?
It was already done, so we got points for the foresight of a prior board. But what we were wondering about is, I believe in our riverfront park, there are decorative lights. And I don't know if those are LED or not. So this would involve either confirming that they are, and again, getting points based on something that somebody's done in the past, exploring the cost of conversion and seeing if it's worthwhile.
Great. Yep, absolutely. So I think that's the thing we'll do. And then utility conversion, the utilities are offering options to convert these decorative lights where they weren't previously. So this, this is something we could explore as well. Next slide, please. So benchmarking is something that the village actually already did. So the first round of the program just required the village to pass a benchmarking resolution, and that was all. We actually went, went ahead with, with the village and did some bench, actual benchmarking, which is basically you're putting the energy use data from the village buildings over 1,000 square feet into this EPA tool, and it helps you to track your greenhouse gas emissions and just kind of see what your usage is from year to year. So because that wasn't a required step in the first round, they're actually giving points for actually doing the benchmarking. So again, this is something that the village already has done. The only thing I would need to check in there is to make sure that there's two years' worth of data. Sometimes we just would do one year worth just to get the data in. So we just might need to add another year to that to get those extra points. Next, please.
Tara, are you going to speak separately about quote-unquote "advanced" benchmarking? Or was that included in what?
I'm sorry, yes, that, that's advanced benchmarking is basically what that is. I'm sorry, I didn't use the term that they use in their, their language. So you guys actually have already done advanced benchmarking because you have some data, I believe, in Energy Star Portfolio Manager. That's my understanding at least, but correct me if I'm wrong there.
I'm not, I think Jill had said something about needing to give NYSERTA access to this.
Yeah.
Wasn't sure if we had. And our, our village clerk, who's on the line, who's on the call, did the lion's share of all the work in uploading this information. He should get a pat on the back for contributing to that first 30,000 that we got. And I see MJ, you're, do you know, well, we won't put her on the spot. We don't really, we don't mean for this presentation to take too much time. This is really more just an overview in order to, sorry, my phone is going off. I'm going to mute myself. Keep going.
Yep, yep. So we can look into that for sure. Thanks, Josh. So the next one is Clean Fleets, and we're talking here about an EV charging station, I think, was, was of interest when Josh shared the thing with me. So EV charging stations are actually very cheap right now and something that is worth putting in because of the amount of grants that are on the street right now for them, which I don't expect to last forever. So installing an EV charging station at, you know, say, the Village Hall or somewhere would be, would be something worth looking into that would get you quite a few points.
We're in that process currently. It's actually on the agenda for later to get that approved.
Oh, wonderful.
Check.
Yes, check. That's great. Okay, awesome. And next, please. All right. So the next one on here, we've got Climate Smart Community Certification. The baseline for this program gets you 600 points. This is a program that is similar to the Clean Energy Program, but it's run through the DEC. The difference between the two programs, the biggest difference is that this one also focuses on adaptation. So looking at climate adaptation strategies and just generally preparing the community for climate change as opposed to just mitigating or reducing greenhouse gases like NYSERTA does. So a lot of the program actions overlap, so it's well worth it to do, to try to achieve both of them. And then we can provide support for this one as well. And you very well may already have the required points to get certified in this. We just have to take a look and help you see.
We, we have a pending bronze certification already submitted, and I believe we'll know at the end of May. This is actually our second round of submitting. We had most, but not all of the points in January. So hopefully, fingers crossed, end of next month, we get these points.
Great. Well, that's awesome. Okay, we'll check that box, too. So you guys are doing just a ton of things. And I'm sorry that I'm not in the loop here as well. My colleague Jill normally works with village, as Josh knows, but she's going to be out maternity leave any day now. So, so I'm stepping in to help with this process. Next slide, please, Amy. Community Choice Aggregation and Opt-Out CDG. So you guys have already explored CCA, I think, and know what CCA is. I don't know if your CCA is up and running. That was something I wasn't 100% clear on, but.
It is, it is, but we did not elect the.
100% renewable.
Yeah.
Okay, no, that's, and that's totally fine. So that's the one thing that gets you points for CCA in this program. There's another part of it now that's called Opt-Out CDG. And I think that's, that's the basis for what you're interested in exploring. And basically what that is, is, so CCA is you're choosing your supply for everybody. CDG can be actually done at the same time as CCA because you're not choosing your supply. You're basically just getting renewable energy credits on your bill. And it's way easier because you're never going to have that price go up. Like, nobody's ever going to have their rates go up potentially. It's always going to be a 10% savings. And it's the same as CCA where anybody can opt out and leave at any time. So it's just generally all around a much easier program. The only thing with this program, and I'm not sure you know exactly if you've heard from anybody on this or talked to anybody, but there aren't too many companies that have been actually approved to do Opt-Out CDG quite yet. The PSC is reviewing a lot of these implementation orders, is what they call them, that are going to be coming out very shortly. I think, like, at the end of the month, I know a company that's supposed to hear from them that this is happening. So it's just a matter of kind of the public process to get companies up and running. I think Jewel is the only one that currently can do this. So, but something we can keep you posted on.
I've been, I've been in touch with Good Energy, which was our Community Choice Aggregation Company, and they said they were looking into it, but as of a few weeks ago, it was not yet available.
Okay, great. Yep, that's, so that's the same message that, that I'm basically giving you is that there's just, so we'll keep you posted on companies as they get approved and you can kind of explore this Opt-Out CDG option. Next, please. So just kind of just going over the grants that we talked about in the beginning, there's two types of grants. There's point-based grants, which is basically you're adding up these different numbers and you're getting to certain levels. And then there's action grants, which is the idea that you just do one of these things and you get money. So there's two of those that I'll talk about in a minute, but we'll start with the point-based grants. Next, please. So the point-based grants are you're completing actions, you're collecting points, and then you become eligible for the grant funding. Next, please. The first level is 3,000 points. So as I mentioned before, the village already has 1,000 points they're coming in with. So you got to get 2,000 more points and you get a $10,000 grant. You're obviously a small, medium-sized community. And there's 40 of those per region. So although, you know, I don't know what that seems like to everybody, but I don't think those grants are going to go super fast. I think that, you know, you're going to have some time, but I, based on the progress you've already made, I think you're probably going to grab one of the first ones of those 10,000. Next, please. So the next level that you get to, and this is basically you're just continuing to add points to your total. It's a $20,000 grant, and there's 10 of those per region. So you're eligible for each of these. So you hit the $10,000 level, then you hit the $20,000 level. And next, please. And the, the final level is $5,000, or 5,000 points, which is a $70,000 grant. And there's only four of these per region for small communities. So, you know, that's, that's basically the highest level you can achieve, and of course, the lowest number of grants available. Next, please. So the next, so that's the points grants. The next is what are called action grants. So there's two high-impact actions that I haven't talked about yet that are not only associated with points, so they get you to those point totals, they also get you a straight-up, just like, grant, they throw money at you. So the first one is community campaigns, which I don't know if you guys have undertaken a solarized campaign at any point, a community solar, solarized campaign or anything like that. Josh, is that something you've done?
No.
Okay. So this is basically, the model of solarize is basically to kind of, you would choose a supplier and you would basically kind of get, you'd get 10 sign-ups. So with community solar, basically, you're doing, you're working with, you know, Ampean or Nexamp or one of these communities that are subscribe, subscribing companies is what they're called. They would help to market the program. The village would kind of be on board. You would hold maybe an event or two, which could be remote, and you get 10 sign-ups and then you'd get $5,000 for that. So it's a pretty kind of, and 10 sign-ups with that with community solar is actually relatively easy. The other campaigns that are available are electric vehicles. So you'd work with like a dealership and for every electric vehicle purchased that they made, the village would get credit. Clean heating and cooling is the same, but it's with heat pumps. So you'd work with a heat pump contractor. When the 10 threshold is met, you'd get 5,000. And then demand response, which I would, I would say this one's kind of on the edge right now because NYSERTA is trying to kind of reevaluate what this looks like. There's these systems that exist where basically your, your whole house can be kind of put on, like, monitoring by the utility. But there's not too many of them in the region yet, so it's really based on the utility. So I would say maybe don't explore demand response until NYSERTA figured this one out. But the other three, there are plenty of communities that are going out for this. There are some that actually have already gotten the 10 sign-ups and the three months this program has been open. And they already have $5,000 in their pocket. So it's well worth, well worth thinking about these. Next, please. So you can see here, there are the $5,000 grants for small communities. There's 100 of these. But that's statewide. So that's unfortunately not just our region, that's the entire state that you're competing against. So they, this would probably need to be a quicker timeline. Next, please. And the second action grants, which gets you 1,200 points as well as a grant of $5,000, is adopting what's called New York Stretch. And I don't know if you've had a presentation on this or Jill's talked about this, but the base, basic idea of New York Stretch is that the New York State Energy Code for Buildings is updated every three years. So this is a baseline energy code for all communities in New York State. Every municipality is also allowed to, to adopt a more stringent energy code at any point. New York State released this New York Stretch, which is basically the next level up as far as the energy code goes. So the energy code was, was changed over in 2020. So basically, in 2023, New York Stretch will be the baseline code. If the village was to adopt New York Stretch now, which is basically a year and a half early, you would get $5,000, a $5,000 grant and 1,200 points. So it's basically about 11% more efficient than the baseline code right now. And yeah, so that's the gist of it. I won't go into the logistics of any code because I'm not a building code expert, but we have an expert on staff if that's something that your code inspector wants to talk to them about and kind of go into detail about what this looks like and how, you know, how it all works. But basically, that's the gist of it. Next, please. And again, there's 5,000, there's a $5,000 grant, and there is 100 of them statewide. The last slide. And basically, just that, that's the gist of the program. I just wanted to reiterate who I am again. I'm with the Capital District Regional Planning Commission. We are based out of Albany and we work in the eight-county region on this program. So we're paid by NYSERTA to provide communities with free technical support for this program. So any support that we can provide to the village is free. And, and we're here to help, basically. So so yeah, that's, that's the gist of it.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Tara. And Amy, just to recap, the, the goal this evening would be essentially to get the concurrence of the board for me and the Conservation Advisory Council to move forward with these specific items. There's, there are others that Tara did not talk about because we didn't think. Because we didn't think that they made sense for our village. So. If that's the sense of the board, I, you know, I'd begin working with Tara right away and we keep the board apprised. We we get the additional information that we need. No, no decisions about spending or or law change would happen without specific approval of the board for each instance.
So basically, just the okay for you to move forward with the exploration and 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 figuring out, you know, some of these things might already be. I I don't know about our decorative lights either. I don't know if they're LEDs.
I got us, like, someone sent me a message saying that the Christmas lights for the tree in Riverside Park are new this year and LED.
Yeah, they were LEDs.
Yeah, so that that conceivably that could count, you know, I so.
Anybody have anything to ask Josh or add, or should we have the council move forward with this and see what we can? See what we can do? That sounds like a a positive response.
Yes. For it.
Okay.
Thanks so much.
Great. Thank you, Tara. Thank you, Josh.
For having me.
Thanks for coming. Yeah. Um, okay, excellent. So now we're gonna move on to applications. That time of year, everybody's planning. Um. Application number one facility use for the park on September 25th. For a wedding ceremony. Everybody has a copy of this?
Yeah.
Maximum of 70, provide outdoor chairs.
And Amy, you you you, I don't know if you were going to say or, uh, but but this is the same.
We'll uh, we'll look at the other one again, too. This is um.
Okay.
This, this party had um, put in an application for the 18th, which is. The date of the street festival. So they're looking to uh, to reschedule. Um, I was in touch with Audrey at the Stewart House. After the last meeting, just to see, you know, if we could find an alternate ceremony site, but she said that they were considering this date. So uh, they put in an application. And uh. Yeah, so I guess September 25th, there's no conflicts. I don't see any reason. To not approve the use of the park on that date. For Chris and Alyssa's wedding ceremony. Anyone have any questions? About that?
I agree.
Yeah, it looks like it's a, it's a small guest count and it'll be outdoors and, you know. As far as COVID goes in September, who knows, but we'll have. Will be keeping up on that and and if they need to take any extra precautions, we'll get in touch with them.
Al- also, Amy, if you note, it says here all guests are to be vaccinated before the event, so.
Excellent.
And I I did have a side conversation with a family member, and while they would have preferred the 18th. They understand the conflict and will be, uh, you know, obviously they've had a substitute um, request for the 25th.
Okay, excellent. So um, can I get a motion to approve the facility use application for Chris and Alyssa's wedding on September 25th?
But we all want to move it.
Okay, so um, was it Ricky first? And second?
I'll second.
Okay, and Josh? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alrighty. Congratulations, Chris and Alyssa. Um, okay, next is the application to close the street. For the motorcycle show. Let me just make sure it says. Yes. We're closing Second Street. From Washington to Franklin, yeah?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
I'll offer that, Amy.
Alrighty, that's.
I'll second.
All right, thanks, Nancy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so carries. The next application, there's so much going on. It's great. A dance recital in the park. On, well, they said the 15th or the 22nd of May, but they prefer the 22nd. I haven't seen any other applications for May 22nd. They have a COVID plan attached to this. Looks good to me. Anybody have any questions or concerns?
Which did they want, the gym or the park? Or is the gym?
I've.
They prefer the gym.
Oh, because.
And then they'll take the park if the gym is um, taken.
Okay.
Interesting.
There's no conflict or anything, correct?
No.
Okay, so let's go ahead and approve them for their first choice day in their first choice location. Uh, or vote on it. All right, Josh?
I'll second. I will. Oh, okay.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so carries. We now have, this one was also revisited from last time. This is a wedding on October 9th. Um, and they uh, added on their COVID plan. Again, who knows what it'll look like in October, so we may have to revisit, but. I feel good to move forward with this wedding in the park as well. They they added in a timeframe, everything we asked them for. Anyone have any questions about the October 9th wedding?
So moved.
All right, Josh?
Second.
All right, Nancy? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so carries. And um, the next is for, um, this is a really cool thing that um. Ellen has been working on with Riverkeeper. They're gonna, um, you guys are gonna kayak out there to clean up middle ground flats, I think. And they just need a little help getting rid of the trash. The.
Yeah.
Plan sort of fell through. So Anthony offered to park the dump truck there. Um, and then he's gonna take the trash to the dump on Saturday after the event is completed. My only question was, I mean, I think depending on how much trash you pick up, we'll figure out the cost of the disposal or whatever. Um, I'm not too worried about it. So does anyone have any questions about this? Anyone wanna make a motion to approve the use of the dump truck to uh, take the the trash?
I, I will.
Thanks, Ricky.
Second.
And Josh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so carries. And then this next, the last one. Everything, okay, okay. The last one is the bike race. They do this, I think they canceled it last year, but they do this every year. And they had a date change this year, so it's going to be June 5th and June 12th. The um, Trooper David Brinkerhoff Memorial Bike Race. They didn't put in the route this year, but I believe it's the same. They've done this years running. Does anyone have any questions about the bicycle race?
So it's two, two dates?
It's two dates. Um, it's uh, the 5th and the 12th of June. And I'm not, um, does anyone? MJ, did they put in the map? There used to be a map that they sent in with us.
Yeah, they they had it with the original application. Um, they, but they just changing the date, so the the map is the same.
Yeah, we approved this already, right?
Yeah, basically, they just, yeah, they're just changing the date.
Okay, there's no conflict or anything, right?
No, we just have to let, I guess, the police know and anybody else who's involved in it.
Okay.
I'll let them know.
Okay, thank you, Gail. Um. Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the new date of the bike race? Okay, I'll take Gail first and then Ricky, you can second.
That was Nancy.
Okay, so I got a motion and a second and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Alrighty. Now we have back to the use apps for from last time that we're revisiting. The street festival and Chris and Alyssa's original wedding date. So let's uh, the street festival, Gail, did you want to talk about where you guys are at? I know. You've, you've gone pretty.
Yeah, we we have uh, in the process of booking the bands, I have probably 25 interested vendors at this point. We haven't reached out to many more. Our fireworks are all set up. For that. I said, it's just, it's gonna be just in the park area and along the outside of the park.
I still think it'll be really good for everybody to get at least a smaller festival, so we feel a little back to normal.
Get outside, I agree.
Yeah, so um. Let's vote on the street festival. Application. Can I get a motion to approve the street festival?
Got mine.
All right, Ricky. Second?
Second.
Okay, Josh? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so um, I think because. Chris and Alyssa have put in for the second date. I mean, I'm sorry there was a conflict, but I'm looking at their. Application again. Um, they did write that they uh, knew about the festival, so we're, you know. Knew that it was a chance they wouldn't be able to use the park. We very rarely get conflicts like that, but I'm glad it worked out. So I don't even know, we don't vote on the other one, do we? Now, MJ, okay. Um, great, so we're through the facility use applications for this evening. No, I don't think we got minutes for last. Meeting because uh, we were working.
What's the date of the street festival?
Uh, September 18th.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, I mean, the street festival brings in a lot of people that patronize all our, all our businesses, and it's been such a tradition here. Love it or hate it, it means. It means another, another summer, another year in Athens, and I'm happy to get back to it. Okay, so we didn't get minutes for April 14th. Yet. We were feverishly working away on the budget. So uh, can I, did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes from March 24th?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we vote on those if we weren't on the board then?
No, I'm afraid that only Gail and Ricky and I can vote on those, I think, right? Is that true?
Any, any of the board members can, if you are able to independently um, determine for yourselves that they're are ac, they are accurate, like if you. Reviewed the um, the transcript or the recording of the of those meetings.
Well, I think everyone was there. I think.
If you were there, yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
All right, vote away, kids. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for the March 24th Village Board Meeting?
Me.
All right.
And I'll second. Alrighty, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, there we go. Did everyone get a chance to look at the abstracts?
Yes.
Any questions, any concerns? Josh, I know you emailed something, but I didn't know the answer to that either. What was the company you were asking?
And MJ sent me a a private message that was a a payment for the DPW building.
Okay, yeah, I thought that was probably what it was because it wasn't one of our. Okay, um, so any other questions on the abstracts? All right, can I get a motion to approve payment of the vouchers as presented on abstract?
Hello, sir.
Alrighty.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so carries. Now we're on to the electric vehicle charging stations. I'll read this. I had a question, though. The cost that's listed on this um, resolution. Comes down, correct? Like, in the end, we only end up being out of pocket after all the rebates for about. How much, Josh, like $1,500 or something?
That's correct, Amy. We're going, we're going to be getting uh, two stations with two charging ports, each total of four. This is including installation. This is a 41,000 plus dollar value. And um, because of an ICERTA incentive and utility rebates. And the grant the from the Athens Community Foundation. Ultimately, our only charge is about $1,500 and. We'll make that back in the first year and a half uh, after uh, with the fee, a dollar fifty an hour.
Great.
That we're charging uh, for people to use it. And after that, it's pure profit.
Excellent. So whereas the village has been awarded a grant from the Athens Community Benefits Foundation in an amount of $10,214. Dollars and 50 cents for the purchase of electronic charging stations and utility incentives and ICERTA rebates. Whereas the village has received an estimate which includes utility incentives and ICERTA rebates from plug-in stations online. Which will provide the village with two units costing the village a net amount of $11,715 and 50 cents, which if you do the math, it's 1,500 bucks, okay? Therefore, be it resolved that the village approve estimate number 10080 provided by plug-in stations online to install two electronic. Charging stations in the village at a cost of $11,715 and 50 cents, which after the. Community Benefits Foundation Grant will be about $1,500.
We gotta come up with 11,000, almost $12,000, then get rebated?
Well, we already got the 10,000 from the um. Community Grant Foundation, correct, MJ? So.
Yes.
So we.
Yeah, so the bottom line is just that $1,500 that we have to come out with, come up with.
And what do we, what do we actually, do we have to pay them before the rebates, or is that like an instant rebate situation?
So um, that I don't know.
I I can answer that question. So um, there's two things. There's the utility incentive. There's three things. We talked about the Athens Community Foundation Grant. Then there's the utility incentive. That's from Central Hudson. That comes off the top. We don't have to pay that. But the ICERTA rebate, we do have to pay that upfront. And then um, once uh, everybody's been paid and the process is completed, we submit for that and we get that money.
Okay. And do you have like a timeframe? We don't know, or six weeks?
I mean, the time, I I don't know. I mean, the timeframe is gonna be, the the, it's gonna be much more. Very variable depending on how quickly the the like, the utility uh, upgrades the uh, power pole that's right next to the parking lot there. And we get this uh, items shipped and installed, but I think once the last bill has been paid. Then we submit to NYSERTA, and I'm not sure how long they take, but um. I I I don't, I can't answer that, but I, you know, I mean, state is moving slowly these days because of COVID, so.
Yeah.
You know, in in two or three months, when we submit, things could be moving faster. I wouldn't want to say, I'm not sure.
Gotcha. MJ, we're okay with that, though, right?
Yeah, I had a question, though, regarding the um. The station admin part of it. I, you know, I I was filling out the paperwork and I I stopped at that point just because I don't really know what's involved in all of that. Do you have any idea how much is entailed with being the station admin for this program?
I uh, I I don't have um, close knowledge. Um, we can ask Ron, but my, what my understanding is. Is that, I mean. People will use electronic, their credit cards or their phones to pay for this and all that information, the use. And the revenues, all that is uploaded to the cloud. And then you'll have software that will allow you to look at that. And you could look at that as frequently or as infrequently as you want. I mean, basically. Maybe quarterly or every six months, something like that. You could look and see what the revenues have been. That's my impression, uh, but there's really, and and I'm not aware of much else in the way of maintenance uh, or administration, but. We can definitely ask Ron, you know, before we sign on the dotted line.
We also had a question from Rob Brunner about um, insurance. How's that handled? How's that handled? Would it just go onto our policy or?
Um, I don't know the answer to that question. I, um, I, I don't know whether we need a separate policy for that or, uh, whether it, uh, you know, could be included in, um, that's a good question, or whether it would be included in, um, yeah, uh, uh, in some way under, uh, uh, our, uh, I don't know the nature of whatever, uh, uh, equipment policy we have. I mean, whatever, you know, our, our trucks and et cetera, et cetera, uh, you know, uh, uh, if we have some existing policy that we could, you know, add this to, we'd do that, but if not, we might have to buy a policy.
Um, okay, um, I can answer, Linda, we are purchasing the stations, Linda. Um, so do you wanna maybe table this until the next meeting, until we answer those couple of questions? I mean, I'm, I'm sure, I'm pretty sure we'll get an answer that we can live with, but maybe we should just hold off until we have those questions answered, and then we'll put this on the agenda for May twelfth and, and vote then. How do, how does everybody feel about that?
That's fine, better safe than sorry.
Yeah, I just would, I mean, I feel like, since we have, those are good viable questions, so let's get them answered. And then we'll, we'll, um, we'll table this till May twelfth. Is that, is that okay, MJ?
That's fine with me.
Sounds good. Um, okay, the next resolution has to do with, um, Sergeant Turcassio's, uh, retirement. Uh, this has been going on for quite some time. Uh, Sergeant Turcassio of our police force was, uh, put into the wrong retirement system years ago. Um, and we've just rectified that. I'm sure he'll be glad he's retiring in, in a couple of months. Um, so in order to get that all taken care of, the New York State Senate had to pass a bill and, and there was all kinds of things that had to go on, but we're finally at the point where, and there's a long resolution attached, I, I, the board got it, I'm, I'm not gonna read the whole thing unless somebody really wants me to. But suffice to say that this will put it right, this will get his retirement straightened out and get it off of our plates. Um, so be it resolved that the village board approve Senate Bill Number four seven seven nine and Assembly Bill Number six seven three five authorizing Edward Turcassio Junior to receive certain credit under Section three eighty-four dash D of the Retirement and Social Security Law. Can I get a motion to approve the correction of, uh, Ed's retirement?
I'll offer that.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, somebody call Ed. Um, now, the next is, um, appropriation transfers. Time of year, we, um, MJ was telling me about this today. Move things from certain, uh, budget line items to other budget line items, some that have, have, um, been depleted that need a little beef up from other line items that still have room to spare. So, um, I'll read this. Be it resolved that the village board authorizes the following appropriation transfers. Fourteen hundred dollars from appropriation A nine zero seven zero point eight fireman's workers' compensation to A nine zero four zero point eight workman's compensation, fourteen hundred dollars. Ten thousand seven hundred dollars from appropriation A five one one zero point four D road materials to A five one three two four B garage, twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh, A five one one zero point four D garage electric, two hundred dollars. A five one eight two point four street lighting, eight thousand dollars. Uh, seven thousand five hundred ten dollars and thirty-five cents from A one four four zero point one engineer to A one four five zero point four election expense, nine hundred five dollars. And A one nine, uh, one zero point four insurance, six, sixty-six hundred five dollars and thirty-five cents. Eight hundred and twenty-five dollars from A one three two five point four E computer repairs to A one three two five point two computer hardware software support, hundred and seventy-five dollars. A one three two five point four C, three hundred and fifty postage and A one three two five point four D phone expense, three hundred dollars. Everybody get that? Can I, can I please get a motion to approve these, uh, appropriation transfers?
I'll offer.
All right. Second, was that Ricky?
Yep.
Alrighty, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Great. Um, okay, we are at correspondence. We have another letter from, um, Athens Performing Arts Corporation. Everybody saw this, they are, um, just thanking the village board for, uh, agreeing to, to have them, to let them have the series. They're still aware that we're gonna work on the size of the amount of spectators. And, um, on their end, they have, instead of booking bands that will draw huge crowds, they're giving a chance to some up and coming bands, which is kinda cool. Um, so there, they'll have less, less crowds to manage and, um, it'll be easier to distance people. And they will apply all restrictions and protocols as determined by state law at the time of each concert and any directives and suggestions from the village board, so that they are in full compliance at all times. I think that, that's fine. I'm gonna ask them to actually put in the application for the dates. So that we can at least take those off the calendar and not have any, um, issues with that. Anybody have any questions about APAC? I know that Nancy, you did some configuring, you did some math in the park. Um, we're gonna, that, when we get closer, we'll have a number. Their number from the last, um, correspondence came down significantly. Um, just in my talking to them, because I'm their liaison. So, um, yeah, that sounds good. I'm just gonna email Carol and ask that they just put in the, the official applicant. Oh, hi Carol. So just, yeah, put in the official application and, and we'll move forward, so that's cool. Um, sounds good. Looking forward to a little slice of normal. Um, the next one is a letter from County Administrator Sean Groden. Basically, saying that they passed a resolution for, uh, that they will help and assist in any demolition of any unsafe buildings within the village, and we should contact them. Yeah, does anybody have any questions on this? It's, it's pretty just, they need to let us know about that. It's not, there's no action we need to take right now. Ready to go on that one? Okay, and the next one is also from the county legislature. Um, they awarded the fuel oil bid to Botini Fuel at a dollar eighty-one per gallon and a dollar eighty-two per gallon. So Botini got the contract with the county for fuel. Just FYI. Any questions on that? Okay. Uh-oh, Ricky, he was out, now he's back, okay, um. The, uh, next one, also from the county. They passed a resolution, the county legislature passed a resolution in support of rescinding a New York State fiber right-of-way fee. Um, I read this over, um, the state was charging a fee. If anyone had to, if any municipality had to, um, install fiber optic crossing, um, a state road, the DOT. Um, and this is just them, the Green County Legislature is supporting removing that fee from, from municipalities like ours if they need to do that kind of work. So we just get, we just get told about that. There's no action on our part needed for that either. Um, and we got twenty-five dollars from the Town of Athens Court for the month of March. That's the next one. Anyone have any questions about that? Every once in a while, we get some money from the court. Not a lot. Um, the next piece of, of this pertains to, um, Josh, you might wanna look at this specifically. Uh, it's Nymer, and they're going to be, um, appraising and assessing all our buildings. And I did notice that the old, uh, the old DPW garage is on there, so make sure they take that off. But they're in the process of doing that, and I don't believe there's any action that we need to take except for we should double check that when they're done, we, that's not on there anymore. We shouldn't be paying for the insurance on that. Anyone have any questions on any of the correspondence? Yeah?
Yeah, sorry. They do have in their letter, um, some things that they are asking for. A, a primary liaison to access the facilities, which I would imagine would be Anthony. Access to the recent past five years construction cost information, if readily available. So maybe we could give them the information about the new DPW building. Uh, I guess MJ would be able to provide that. And, um, the review of our municipality's up-to-date statement of values. And, um, that's, was attached to the letter, and I, I guess they want us to review that. Um, I, uh, don't, you know, I don't, it, it's essentially what, what the, um, buildings that we own uh, are, are worth. And, um, so, uh, I don't have any really way to measure this against anything else. So I guess that's not something we can do, other than people can look over it and see if any of these numbers jump out as either way too high or way too low. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, yeah, so, um, that's, that's that.
Yeah, I figured MJ's on it.
Okay, yep.
Um, okay. Um, oh, now that, do you wanna talk about, the next thing on, um, on the agenda under new business is proclamation for Arbor Day. Should've signed this when I was in the office today. Um, we were designated a, a, a tree city, yes, Josh?
Y-yes.
Tree village.
Yeah, but they're trying to save trees, so they're, um, not sending a lot of, uh, things on paper.
Oh, can I, so I should e-sign it? I mean, like, digitally sign it?
I, 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 no, I'm just, yeah, I, I think you can e-sign it, would be fine. Um, basically, we were designated a tree city, but there's been a little bit of confusion uh, with COVID and changes in the rules, whether that was a twenty-twenty designation or a twenty-twenty-one designation or both. But, just to be sure, i-if we do need to be designated again in twenty-twenty-one, the only thing we really need to do is, uh, designate, uh, you know, Arbor Day, uh, uh, proclaim Arbor Day, which is actually this Friday, so that's what this does. It costs nothing.
Okay, so I will read this into the, into the record then. Um, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Ar- Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And trees, wherever they are planted, are source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Amy Sarago, Mayor of the Village of Athens, New York, do hereby proclaim Friday, April thirtieth, as Arbor Day in the Village of Athens, New York. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. That's nice. Um, cool. So, get out there and celebrate. Plant a tree, climb a tree. Uh, hug a tree.
And just one last thing, uh, we, uh, we're supposed to get a, a welcome packet as a tree city this month, but that was delayed. I think we'll get it next month, so I'll bring that, uh, to you and the COMCOM. And, uh, we can publicize, there's a press release and other official notification of, um, you know, of our designation as a tree city, so.
Excellent, that's cool. Um, now, did everyone get the estimates for repair of the, um, transmission on the police vehicle? Gail, did you wanna talk about that? You're muted.
I don't really know too much about it, other than, um, I believe Ritter's is going to do it, and.
Right, yeah, Roger said that the car is savable, so we should fix it. Um, do we need to make a motion to approve one of these? Uh, what do we do, Tal? Okay.
Yeah, just a quick motion will do it.
Okay, so, um, can I get a motion to approve, I believe, what was the total? Three thousand? I don't have them in front of me, damn.
I don't either, let me see.
The one thing I forgot to pull out and put in my folder for-
I think it was, I think it was around four.
Thirty-five. When did he sign that?
I have it, I have it. Uh, are we going with JR's or with Hendrix?
I think Hendrix, I, I misspoke before about Ritter's.
Okay, for Hendrix, the total is three thousand four hundred and fifty.
That sounds right. Um, can I get a motion to approve the expenditure of three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars to fix the transmission in our Crown Vic?
So moved.
Thank you, Josh.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Gail. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, excellent. Um, fuel tank, fuel oil tank insurance for the new DPW garage.
Okay, I, I can talk to this. Um, Ricky was kind enough, uh, to give me a personal handover of the insurance, uh, responsibility and let me know that we need to decide whether we want to take out an insurance policy on the new oil tank. And, uh, there are pros and cons, um, but we did speak to, um, Jason, uh, Pryzner, the, uh, village engineer. And, um, the cost of the policy is three hundred and fifty dollars, which he said was, uh, about the ballpark of what he would consider worth paying for, given that if there is, in the very unlikely event, a leak, truck backs into it or a tree falls on it or something, uh, that we would be covered. As you know, we did end up having a, a, a big spill, I believe, uh, at the old site and, uh, paid fairly substantially for that, so. Um, the, the, and while I'm, have the floor, uh, we were also asked to, uh, go ahead, uh, and, um, sign a cancellation of the policy on the old building, which hasn't been done yet. And I don't know, Amy, whether you've done that, whether you have the authority to do it, whether you need a vote.
That was signed, actually. I signed it for Nolan Pazin the other day.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and then I guess, uh, just, um, w-we need to approve the, uh, or de-debate and/or their approve or not approve the expenditure of, uh, three hundred and fifty dollars a year for, uh, policy on the, uh, oil tank.
I say it's worth it.
I say it is too.
Yeah. All right, so can I get a motion to approve the three hundred and fifty dollars a year for insurance on the new oil tank at the DPW?
I'll do it.
All right, thanks, Ricky.
Can I just, uh, say something about that, though? The amount, the, the three hundred and fifty dollars is an estimate based upon the size and, uh, the fact that it's new. So, once we fill out the application for the policy, they'll give us a definite number on that. But they said around three hundred and fifty dollars.
So should we just approve applying?
Yeah.
So should we just approve applying for the policy? And then we will get to the.
Yeah, I just don't want anybody to be surprised if it comes out to be three hundred and seventy-five or something.
All right, so roll that back. Can I get a motion to approve applying for the policy, so we can get an exact price on the insurance for the fuel oil?
I'll do, I'll do it again.
Good. All right, still in. I like it. All right, thanks, Josh. All in favor? All right, opposed? Excellent. So we'll find out the exact cost of that probably, but you think by the next meeting or by the end of next month, probably?
Yeah, I think it's something maybe Anthony's gonna fill out. I don't think I have the knowledge of that.
Let me know if you need me to sign anything or anything like that, of course.
Wayne, will you let Anthony know, or is somebody gonna let Anthony know?
Yeah, I can let him know.
Okay, both. Thank you very much.
Um, old business. The American Legion did provide COVID-19 guidelines for their, their gathering after the Memorial Day parade. So now that was an application from last meeting as well. Did we approve it pending that, or do we, did we table it? We approved it pending the COVID restrictions, but we took off. Okay, excellent. DPW paving and new hire. Talk about the paving, Nancy?
Yes, I circulated the two quotes that we got. And the one from Color Russo, they, they provided a ten-page quote. It's, you know, very detailed of what they're gonna do. And while it's thirty-five hundred dollars more than the other quote, Color Russo is who the DPW has used for many, many years. They're very reliable. They really like them. They, they're, you know, they do a really, really good job, so that's their preferred vendor. And again, this is under the bond.
Yeah. So that, that number was a little bit less than Anthony, when he was just sort of spitballing it to me, so I'm not shocked by the number.
No, no, and they said, Anthony said, like, he called this in tomorrow, and the whole paving project will take two days.
And are we cool to just go with that quote? Tal, MJ, do you have any? We're good? Okay. Um, I, my, my feeling is to go with the one that has proven a good, unreliable vendor in the past, even though it's a little bit more than the other guy. Anybody have anything to add or debate on that?
I had a quick question. Nancy, I don't know if you have this information. You mentioned in your email that the other company, and I don't know, is Peckham. And, and you said, you alluded to kind of bad experience in the past.
Yes.
Is that information that you're able to share, or do you have more information on that?
I do. There was, they did, they did some paving in front of Stella's that resulted in constant water collection, and so the DPW had to hire Color Russo to redo it.
Thank you. And is this the same, I mean, Peckham that owns the asphalt plant and the building out on Skahari Turnpike?
I mean, the address, yeah, because, well, the address here is Queensberry, but I assume it's the same.
Everyone. Okay, so can I get a motion to hire Color Russo to pave the parking area at the new DPW building?
I will offer.
Thank you.
I'm the oldest.
Anyone? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and everyone who's not speaking, just mute, because we're getting some background noise.
Somebody's television or conversation.
Yeah.
The new hire. The, no, the, the other one was the new hire.
Oh, new hire, sorry.
Yeah.
It's in, it is in the budget. We budgeted for it.
And they just, but, but the question was last time, whether or not they could put an ad in for somebody who it, who doesn't have that license, because the three of them are already licensed, and they only have one truck that requires that license. And so, and they feel that they could get more applicants without the license.
The CDL, yeah. I think we said that that would be okay, didn't, didn't we?
I forget why it was pending. I, I thought Tal was gonna check into that.
If you, if they feel that it's okay, that they don't need somebody who has that, I mean, maybe it's something the person could go for once they're already hired.
In the contract, it's a different rate of pay if you don't have that.
Okay. Wayne? That would make sense.
Make me honest. Make me honest here.
What's that?
Is it, is it okay to?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We've been, we've actually been saying it for a long time. I mean, we downgraded the trucks to smaller trucks where we don't need the driver's license for. So, and like Nancy said, you're probably gonna get more applicants to respond to the ad.
And is it a different rate of pay if they don't have the CDL?
It is, but it is also up to Anthony in his, that's the word I'm looking for, evaluation.
Okay. Um, so let's go ahead and, and put that ad out there and get ourselves a fourth, a fourth DPW guy or lady. Okay.
Great, thank you.
We don't need to make a motion to put an ad in to hire, okay. The next thing on old business is the Van Loon House. I am not entirely sure what that means.
Okay, I just wanted to, I gave a copy of the lease agreement that we uncovered when we were doing some filing paperwork. So I gave it to Tal just this afternoon. And it, it says basically what the, the relationship is between the village and Green County Historical Society on that building. I don't think anybody really knew. So we found it, and I gave it to him. I started reading it. It was like nine pages, so I got really bored. So I gave it to Tal, so. Anyway, so it's, it's, it's coming, because there was a question about the electric bill and all that.
And actually, I, I did look through it. Nine pages is pretty boring, especially in old lease like this, but the utilities are supposed to be paid by the tenant, unfortunately.
Yeah, see, we're, we're the tenant. For a while there, we didn't know whether we were the tenant or whether we owned the building, but apparently that arrangement was that the Green County Historical Society owns it, and we are considered the tenant.
That's correct.
So the electric is our problem. I mean, not that it's a problem. It was, but I think they fixed.
It is kind of a problem, because it just keeps going up and up, but.
Was it high again after we?
Yeah, it's been, it's been high, and, you know, I think, I don't know, Tal, if there's anything we can do moving forward to change that lease, because it's so old, and nobody's ever, we're supposed to give them a dollar a year to be a tenant, and nobody's done that in, I don't know how many years. I don't know if anybody ever did it. So I don't know if it's something that can be reworked or revisited at some point or what. I just figured we would look at it, so we know.
It's, it's certainly something that should be reviewed. There's no doubt about that. And the term, the initial term was for five years from 2003 to 2008. And then it has the, the evergreen clause in it that says that it gets automatically renewed for another five-year period, unless one or the other party puts it in writing that they're going to terminate. So, you know, every five years, it's certainly up for review.
But you mean, the twenty would be 2023?
Yep.
So is there a reason why we're a tenant? Why can't they just own it and have the relationship with the, the historic group that works on there? Why can't we step out as a middle entity?
We could.
Let's. I mean, is there any advantage to our being the tenant? You know, I don't know that the village.
I don't, I think maybe the history of that, from what I remember, is that we wanted to make sure that we, we had a relationship with who ever owned it, so that we would make sure that it was taken care of, whether it was us or whoever was the landlord or tenant, that there was a relationship and that we watched out for it, and they watched out for it. That's really all I remember, because that's back when we got all that grant money from USGen to fix it up and did the foundation and all of that, so.
Something with Chris Feaster knows.
Yes, so he might know more about why or any more history than I know, but that's all I know.
And maybe the legal relationship that allows us to maintain that status would be, could potentially be something other than landlord/tenant. I'm not sure what that would be, but you know, some other, some other fiduciary or beneficial or trust kind of relationship that would, wouldn't have us paying the electric bill on that building, but still.
Yeah, I know there were those two, a couple of really high ones. Did another really high one come in, because they said that they had changed what they were doing over there?
I think the last two months was high. I'll have to check again.
All right, well, let's, let's, um, let's do some digging on this and figure out if we can't. We have a question. Does Athens use the building? Sort of. We open it for tours and whatnot on special days, correct? Like Victorian stroll, and there's been a group, there's been a group renovating it or restoring it, I should say, and that's, that's where the high electric bills came in, because they were plastering, and they had these big blowers in there over the winter, drying the plaster. So I mean, we do use it, but not on a daily.
It, it is.
It's more ceremonial.
Well, and it is kind of the first thing you see. I mean, it is, it is kind of, I believe, very much in the interest of the village to maintain control to some extent over that building. So it's not like I'm in any way suggesting we abandon that. But if there's a way to renegotiate the relationship, so the, our control doesn't cost us an electric bill every month, it would be worth exploring that.
Yeah. Well, let's look into it. Let's see who has the history. If somebody wants to, maybe I'll reach out to Chris. And we'll, we'll, we'll put our heads together on that and, and figure out what we can do to maybe make that less of an expense for the village, because I, I don't know where they're getting, where the money is coming from to do the restoration. I think it's charitable, it's a charitable organization, so maybe maybe they could pay for the electric to do the restoration. So let's just get some more background on that.
Maybe we could give them a fixed sum.
Yes, we'll pay X amount, and then you're on your own.
Yeah, that, that, so we're not at risk for high electric bills, but yet we're also still contributing something.
It's a good idea, too. All right, well, let's get some more background on that before we, and then we'll figure out where to go from there. Because, yeah, it was, it was an incredibly high electric bill a couple of months in a row. And I thought they had changed what they were doing down there, but. Okay. The next thing, I'm gonna actually skip four and go to five, and then we'll come back to four, because it's gonna take longer than five. Workplace violence training and sexual harassment training is required by Nymer. And there is an online course that we can take, correct, MJ? You were telling me about that.
Yes, there's, there's courses that you can take online or webinars, and then you can actually, you know, have verification that you've done it, and they keep it on file and let you know when you're up again. So instead of trying to get all of us together for a class or whatever.
Yeah, that hasn't.
We can just do that. So if you, I think Gail had provided me with that a long time ago, and I just found it in my file. And then we were reminded by the insurance guy when he was there to get that done, so.
We're supposed to do it annually, right?
I think it's annually, or it's biannually. I don't know. I can't remember.
So if you have information on that, let's distribute that to everyone, so we can all sign up for.
I just completed mine.
Yeah, you gotta do it, too. We're all, we're all supposed to do it.
Yeah, I did it last year. Yeah, do it again this year.
You gotta do it again.
Oh, you're kidding me. Gonna be reminded.
In front of your computer again. We tried to get everyone together at one time, and it just didn't, didn't work out. So let's get all the information about how we can sign up for those webinars and let's get everybody through that, that training, because it's required of us.
I, I have heard that if you have done the training, like through your day job, you can attest to that and don't have to do it again.
Okay, so.
Oh, no, that wasn't how it was, was it, Mary Jo? Didn't, when we took it all that one time?
Yeah, you have to, like, for instance, if you work, if you're a fireman and you're DPW, you have to take it at the, as a fireman and as a DPW worker, because it's considered kind of like a species-specific type of thing, where it's depending on your work environment. So if your work environment is different, then it goes with that.
So everyone will have like a different webinar, you know?
Yeah, like, for instance, like Wayne would have to take it for the firemen. He'd have to take it for the DPW.
Okay. All right, well, let's get that information together and get it distributed to everybody that, that is required to take. I think it's everybody works for the village, right? All the police, all the.
Yeah, everybody.
And probably us volunteers as well.
Yes, yeah.
Your firemen have to do it also.
Yeah, elected, appointed, everybody.
Actually, Gail, we just actually just had it last month. We.
All right. Well, there, we don't have to send it to those guys. So yeah, let's just get that, let's get that distributed to everyone, so we can take care of that, because it's been hanging out, too. Okay, so now the last thing on old business is the budget. MJ and I have been working feverishly away on the budget, took everyone's questions into consideration. We we stayed under the tax cap, which was lowered this year to 1.56%, so that was a bit of a challenge. We also had some mandatory items that had to be added. We had a had to budget for mandatory training for the police as per Cuomo's executive order on on policing reform. So we had stuck that in there. Now I sent to the board. Let me find it. I think I sent you the form that Mary Jo has to fill out for the state, so it has all the information. We had to make some trims from the you know, tentative budget that everybody saw. Some of them were, were like the real obvious ones, like that were pointed out during the, the public hearing. But we, you know, things like the, for some reason, the contingent line item was up at thirty thousand dollars, so we don't, we didn't need that much, so we were able to cut you know, twenty-one thousand right there. We'd some, some small cuts around each of the departments. You know, we kept equipment line items at the same as they were last year without any increases, just because this seems like a year that we kind of have to tighten the belt, because we're not able to go that, that extra half percent makes a difference. But I think everyone will still be pretty happy, and we are covered on the things that we need. And like I said, most of the cuts were taken from line items that were just sort of, I don't wanna say bloated, but, you know, things that we hadn't used in years, so we shaved a little off. You know, the engineer budget was very high compared to what we actually paid, so we took that down a bit. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah. I, I, I am just wondering what is the, what, what's expected of us this evening?
We need to pass the budget by the end of the month.
The only reason I ask is I had posted some questions to the draft budget.
Yeah.
And I went and looked at that kind of shared document today, and I didn't see any answers or any changes, so I'm a little uncomfortable voting on a budget that I haven't seen.
And yeah, the, the, the shared document was something that Stefan did, and, and half of us couldn't access it. I mean, I was able to access it, and I sat with Stefan, and we actually got that balanced last Wednesday. Not the same as we did with this. MJ and I, we sat down and like I said, we actually have a little bit of wiggle room. We were, we had to take some, we appropriated some of the surplus from the fund balance, just to cover us with.
I, I believe that you've gotten the outcome that you say you have, but. Uh, if I'm, I'm just a little unco- I'm going to abstain tonight if we're voting on the budget cuz I haven't seen it. And I don't wanna take responsibility or ownership of a particularly important document that I haven't seen.
Can I speak on that?
Yeah. Go ahead, MJ.
I understand that because, I mean, unfortunately, we have to pass the budget by the end of April. The new trustees and mayor come in, you know, when it's already half done, which is um. Kind of a terrible way of doing things, and I think everybody's been in that position. So I get it. The the problem with that was that I was denied access to that spreadsheet for two weeks, so. I couldn't even see the questions, so I'm sorry if I didn't answer them. I did not see them. Until it was past the filing date for the tentative budget. And I got on there and.
I didn't even know you were the one who was supposed to answer that MJ, so I am not in any way.
No, no, I'm just, I get it. I do get it. I completely get it.
Able to to access that document.
You're putting a lot of faith in people and in a document that you haven't had time to work on. But um, always, you know, believe that if you take, if you email me a question directly. You know, I'll be more than happy to answer it. I really didn't see your questions at all, so.
No worries. Yeah, I I I didn't.
I mean, if you, if if we can pass it with an abstained vote. I, I'm not gonna hurt my feelings. I just want, I just don't wanna see it again, quite frankly.
We have been on this. Um, you know, every time we thought we had it, something else came up that we had to get in there. And then when we found out, I mean. Um, we kind of had an inkling about the police training budget. Um, but just got confirmation from Roger, you know, Gail had said. That we needed X amount, you know, they needed, they need ten thousand dollars in a training line item uh just to to let you know it was fifteen hundred. So we had to take a little bit more um from the fund balance. We're. Probably not going to spend all of that, but it needs to be there so that it shows that we can cover mandatory training. Um, but Roger feels pretty confident that they can team up with the um with the sheriff's department. Um, I have a list of of. You know, what the changes that we made were. From the tentative budget. But. Um, I feel good about this budget. Uh, like I said, there were. There were little, little. Trims. To some, I tried to stay away from the departments as much as I could, but. Um, we had to here and there, a couple, couple thousand dollars here and there. Um, but like I said, the big ones were um. You know, auditor that we never use um. Engineer line got whittled down, just basically looking at what we actually spend on things. The community center like um, like Rob pointed out. I pointed out at the last meeting um was super inflated, so we took that down as well. But if no one else has any questions, I would love, love. To vote on the budget right now.
I'll offer.
All right, thanks Nancy.
I'll second.
Thank you, Gail. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Thanks, Josh. I totally understand. Um, we'll try to get a better system for next time when when I'm. I'm the mayor throughout the whole process. It was hard to, um, I tried to get together with the with Steph too, but it was hard. Everybody's schedule is insane. But yeah, thank you. MJ did a ton of work. She um, she taught me a ton of stuff. We worked together and. I feel good about that, so. Good, the budget is passed. We're on time, deadline met.
Did our taxes go up?
Um. Well, we stayed under the cap, so essentially uh we went from six dollars and what was it, six dollars and seventy? Five cents per thousand assessed to.
Is six point nine one eight.
Yeah, we went up like sixteen cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. So I mean, that's pretty same. It goes up a little bit. Every year, so. Just. Nominally. So like if you had, if your house is. Let me do the math real quick. So if your house is worth, say, a hundred thousand dollars. Wait, I'm not.
I'm trying to do it too. It's like I'm not in my, not my.
I did it based on mine and it was like, it wa- it only went up for the whole year, maybe like fifty bucks from my, from last year's taxes. For my house, so. Um, it's, it's a little bit, but it always, it always goes up a little bit.
But you had to go up a little bit.
Yeah, I don't even think you would notice it unless you got out your two bills and held them next to each other. But yeah, a smidge. A smidgen of increase.
Sounds good to me.
Cool. Um, all right, so that is the, that's it for the written agenda. Um, let's go around and see. Who's got what to discuss. Um, Ricky, do you wanna go first?
I don't have nothing. I was, I went out seeing Seth uh last Friday. Everything's going smoothly.
Good.
And he said he put in for uh, I don't know, an extra five thousand for slug removal in the. Sewer plan. I said that that would be fine, so.
Yeah, that's in there.
That, that was, that was just about everything smooth.
Good, thanks Ricky.
Yep.
Gail?
Um, I have just a couple of things. Um. At the planning board meeting um last Tuesday. We need to have a site plan review from a nursery that's on North Washington Street. Does anybody know about? That? And um, the old Peckham garage has never done a site plan review. So I don't know um. Is code enforcement. Or notifying them or do we send a letter?
Uh. You know what? I don't know. There's a nursery on. I guess, isn't.
Wayne, Wayne, Wayne knows.
Yeah, it's not a nursery. It's just a landscaper. He keeps, he just, he keeps his equipment there. That's it.
Okay. Um, I'll, um, let's touch base with code enforcement on that and see uh who sends, who sends the letter, if it's uh, if it's the village or if it's from them. Sound good?
Okay, and then uh the next thing I have. Uh, you know this railing out in front of my house?
Yeah.
Can we paint that? Surely the village painted, but um. My next door neighbor on either side. Would like to paint that um. A high gloss black.
I think that's okay. I don't know if you have to go to the planning board for that? Probably not, right? It's railing. It's not historic.
I I think you need to ask the code enforcement officer whether you.
And then the code enforcement officer determines whether it gets kicked up to the planning board.
I'm, do you even, I would just call Jeff or Ed first and say. Do I need uh to even get permission from you uh or have you reviewed this? And if he says no, then you can paint it. If he says. I have the authority to approve this, then you submit it to him and he can, or he'll say. Because it's in the historic district, it does need to go before the planning board.
What color is it now?
It's uh all chipped up green, orange, whatever, a hundred layers of paint that are on.
All right, that's another one. Let's just ask uh Ed and Jeff about both of those things and just and see what they say.
Speaking of which, i- if Ed now has his formal retirement. Is he retiring? Will he no longer be the one of our code enforcement officers or is he gonna stay on and do that?
I believe Ed is retiring from the Catskill Village Police Department, which encompasses. Using part of this retirement. He will be. Staying on as an Athens police officer and code enforcement.
Good.
Yeah, we don't wanna go through that again. Um.
And while we're on code enforcement. Keeping the theme, um. Because both you, Amy, you and Gail are the liaisons for them.
Yeah.
Um, it's gotten to the point where they really do need to set some kind of office hours. Is the, cuz um Dawn sho- showed me the list that she keeps of. Phone calls that are coming in for them because people just, they, people want to be able to have. A body that they can talk to instead of just sending emails and waiting.
I'll talk to them about, I mean, maybe with Ed's um.
Be able to.
Yeah.
Even if it's just, you know, uh, two days a week, two hours, you know, so that people know that there is a time slot.
Okay, we'll talk to them about setting that up um once, you know, their schedules are a little bit more.
And are we taking into consideration COVID? Because our, our, is our village office, is that open yet?
No.
Okay, so that. Would we open a co- uh code enforcement office?
Well, it may not be necessarily for in person. It could just be for phone calls where they would be there to. Yeah, or they could set up a time where people could call them. But right now, there's nothing. Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll talk to them and see if their schedules aren't. I mean, I know their schedules were kind of insane um. For a while there, so. Let's set up a a meeting with them, Gail, and uh we'll sit. There's a couple of things I wanna organize when it comes to that anyway, so.
Thank you.
No problem. Um, Gail, anything else?
Uh, no, I think that that's it.
Okay, thank you. Nancy?
I do have a few things. Um, so we put the. So we um had the ad running in the Daily Mail. Uh, it ended yesterday. For the summer rec director. We haven't gotten any responses yet, but the deadline is May fifth. And um I followed Dawn's advice as far as keeping it exclusive with the Daily Mail to start. And then if we still don't get any responses by May fifth, then I'll post on social media and also. On porcupine soup, which is that, you know, okay, yeah, um. And see where we get with that. So that's the status with that. Um. Cleanup Day was a huge success. Huge success and. According to the the sheriff. An incredible amount of prescription drugs were turned in. Which was really great. Um. The one thing is, so with the, with the brush pile and the chipping, they're hoping to get to it. Next week or the week after. When that happens, um, it's gonna be a couple of days, but. I think this time, because there were quite a few people. Again, who don't, who don't follow social media, didn't know that the brush pile was closed. If we could put that on the board in front of Stewart's. That'd be great. Just to let people know what the dates are for that. And that board is blank. I've never seen it blank.
Oh, we're supposed to put the five K up, Gail. I was.
Is being put up this week.
Okay, cuz that's. Yep.
Okay, so that's that. Um. And then um. A couple of things from, from Anthony. Um, if. Crossroads and or Stella's when they open, if they're, if they're planning on having the stanchions. To separate the street, if they're gonna have on-street parking, they're not available this year. They were borrowed from the town last year and the town's using them. So they will need to take care of their own division. And Gail and I went down to the park. We looked at where we want the picnic tables placed, the ones that uh that Crossroads had borrowed last year. So DPW is gonna place them for us. Um, and. The roof is on the salt shed and the, the oil tank has a new house, a new little shed. That went up, those both went up yesterday. Right?
Um, Monday and Tuesday.
Yeah. Yeah, and then the um, the only other thing was something that Anthony had mentioned to me about the INI problem. Which is um something that. They had done probably uh maybe fifteen years ago and they think one of the big problem, one of the things that's adding to it. Is that people, some pumps are tied into the sewer system and that's not. Allowed. So um, what they're suggesting is that they would do this probably in the fall. Go house to house or send letters to everybody who have some pumps to check to see if that in fact is the case. And then they would just have to be redirected to their property. So that's, that, that's just another out and and um he spoke to Jason about it. And Jason said, yes, that would be a huge contribution. So that's just an another fix for the INI problem. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Josh, you're up next.
Thanks, I have a few things. Uh, one is, I I did send an email around to to the board members earlier today. Uh, I've got about a dozen asks out for letters of support for climate adaptive design. And I've only gotten two letters back so far. I have asked people to get me their letters by Monday, so it's certainly possible that I'll get more. But unless we have, you know, a decent handful of letters. It's gonna, uh, you know, it's gonna make our application much less uh competitive. So. If you know anyone on that list and you have a phone number or you happen to be talking to them. Sometimes just that personal outreach can make a difference in terms of. You know, they'll do it for you if they won't do it for me. So I I just wanted to mention that. Really appreciate anybody, any outreach that you can do on that. I also uh wanted to share a little bit of good news. Um. Uh, not, this is, uh, it's a little bit early, but uh we have heard from the Lighthouse. Um, that uh they're doing their Saturday tours as usual this summer. Uh, the second Saturday from July to August, those are paid. Uh, tours, you have to buy a ticket and reserve it. However, um, they've also, for the first time ever this year. They're going to have uh three free uh Wednesday evening tours. Um, from five to seven uh in July and August. Uh, those are free to the public. They're gonna be. First come, first served, walk up and uh we'll be sending out more information about that, but um. Since we're coming out of COVID, it's always nice to hear uh good news and things that that are coming back. So I wanted to mention that. I also wanted to follow up um. An item that I I brought up last time. I just wasn't sure exactly. Uh, what was gonna happen with it. Uh, I had talked about the boat launch. And how it's in really bad shape and I wasn't sure exactly uh what was gonna happen with that. What happens next?
I don't think there's been any movement on that yet.
What, 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 what is going to happen next? Who's going to do what? What would be the appropriate thing? What can I do?
I don't know if I have any answer for that right now.
Okay, well.
I will, I will make a note to I've um.
Wayne said, Wayne said last time that the upkeep is um by the state.
Yeah, they've been trying to get us to take like. Responsibility for that, but I um, I don't really have an answer for that right now.
Even if it is their responsibility, could we use our bully pulpit as the hosting village? To say, you know, hey, guys, this is your responsibility. Uh. This is, you know, it's a big detraction. All these potholes, people are carrying boats in on trailers. They've got heavy vehicles and so forth, so.
See what I can um figure out on that. I did have a meeting with um Parks and Rec on some, on another. Project the other day, so. Um, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have an answer for that right now, Josh. Let me do a little digging.
Yep, no, no worries. Um. Uh, s- one, one other thing, uh, an- another thing that we talked about last time. Um, is the Athens Gen pilot. And you and Tell looked at each other and said, that's not till twenty twenty-two, right? You both nodded. I I'm just, I I I would like just confirmation. Is there something in writing? That has the date on that or tell, could you send us out an email? Um, I, uh, that's a big ticket item. It's, it's. You know, it's really important. It's, the town is negotiating with Athens Gen, but we have a big interest. The town is about to go through. A change in administration. They just changed their lawyer. So um, I I I don't know the extent to which we can count on them. To represent our interests or how long ahead of time we need to begin to kind of look at things and be involved. So. I said I would be bringing this up, you know, on a steady basis. Um, I'm not expecting an answer tonight, but it would be nice. To just get some correspondence uh from either the mayor or the village attorney. Just laying out the timeframe for, for this, uh, so we can track it and monitor it and and not be surprised. Just laying out the timeframe for, for this, uh, so we can track it and monitor it and, and not be surprised. Tal, you're off mute. I don't know if you want to say
No, that's, that's fine. I was just waiting to see if any of the board members had anything else to say. Um, sure, if you want me to dig into it and make sure that we have a timeline and, you know, all those, all that information, I'd be glad to do it.
Forewarned is forearmed. That would, uh, 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 if Amy, you're, you're Tal's boss, so I don't want to ob- obligate, you know, um, time, uh, but, but I would like that. So I hope you are okay with that.
Yeah, um, I think knowing where we stand on that would be good. And what we can do to help that situation. I, I'm in agreement with you, Josh. So, yeah, Tal, if you can, any info you can get us and any, any next steps we should be taking to prepare for that, because it is coming.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
The, the last thing I want to talk about is, uh, I'm not sure exactly what the best thing to do is. But there, th- there is, um, uh, a, 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 a number of sensitive environmental, um, projects going on. The first has to do with the solar farms uh, that are being, uh, put in place in the town of Athens and Kooksake. They're massive. And, um, the m- m- Mayor Bratisic had a policy which I agree with, which is, uh, let us, let's not have our village get involved in the appropriateness or the aesthetics of it. Um, because that's a, a very complex situation. But, um, what we were interested in was the degree to which the runoff from those, uh, uh, sites, we're going to enter, uh, Sleepy Hollow Lake and change the nature of the relationship of the lake with its dam, which apparently has its own problems. Because if there's more runoff and the dam is at risk of being breached, uh, uh, that is potentially calamitous. So, um, the reason I'm bringing this up is I, I recall Stefan said, uh, a month or so before he, um, went off the board, that he was removing us as an intervenor because he had gotten some information that satisfied him that there was not an issue. And yet I've been looking at websites and following information about this. I had a conversation with, uh, this very distinguished board member of, uh, Sleepy Hollow Lake Homeowners Association. They're still watching this like a hawk. They're not confident yet that, um, the outcome is going to be to their satisfaction, specifically with regard to this issue. Again, they have other issues because it's surrounding them. So I, uh, on this issue was hoping that, I, I sent Stefan an email. I didn't hear back from him yet. Uh, s- asking if he could send me, uh, or us whatever document or documents or email or letter that made him decide we didn't need to be an intervenor anymore so that we can look at that. I don't know if anyone on our board has that information or Tal, if, if you have it. Um, but if we don't, uh, I, 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 I believe we should stay engaged with this issue. Um, and follow it. Uh, the, 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 the state has much more power than it used to have. Uh, and they can make this happen, but we still have, that is, the Hecate and Flint Mine, uh, solar power plants. But we still have the ability and, and they have written into their new law that allows them to decide a strong role for interested parties. And there's like thirty interested parties for each of those. So I'm not sure whether this is an Amy issue or a Tal issue. But I would like us to have, kind of have this on a radar screen and get whatever information Stefan had. Assure ourselves of, of the same conclusion as he had. And if not, then to reengage as an intervenor.
I mean, he was the mayor when he made that decision.
Yes.
And we were on the board and all agreed with him. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll try contacting him as well to see what, what it was that he saw that made him decide that. Um.
I, I mean, yeah, so, um, okay, I,
I don't, I don't want to go back and second guess the, the
I don't, I'm not, I'm not wanting to do that. I just see what he saw because, um, um, according to the person that I spoke with at length in the, who's the liaison at Sleepy Hollow with, uh, Lake, which is, uh, an interest, an intervenor. Um, Hecate is not being particularly cooperative and they're not very trusting of Hecate. Um, Flint Mine is being more cooperative and they're a little more, uh, trusting, uh, of them. But things, none of this is final. So, uh, uh, I mean, of the, 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 the plant, what plants are gonna be under those solar panels? What grass, uh, the runoff, what that's gonna be? It just didn't sound to me like there was enough information, so I, I'm bringing that up again.
Alright, well, I'll, I'll hit him as well. Maybe if we both try to get him, he'll answer.
Okay, the last thing that I wanted to bring up is, uh, there's this, there's this extraordinarily environmentally sensitive area, uh, that's in and around Brick Row. The parcel across the, uh, street from Brick Row and the parcel to the south of it. And I know we were all surprised, um, when the property owner of the parcel to the west of Brick Row um, exercised hi- his perfectly legal rights and tore down all those trees. I, I have been in my capacity as Conservation Advisory Council Chair, uh, attending a variety of webinars and trainings. And there's a whole host of new laws, uh, model laws that the village could conceivably pass to give us more control and more protection over the development of those areas, which are, you know, kind of downstream from Sleepy Hollow Lake, which, uh, are, are gonna pass whatever they have to pass, uh, into the Hudson River. Um, I don't, I, I know that, um, Jason Preisner is working with the planning board, uh, on kind of reviewing the plans. Uh, I, I don't know what kind of background and tr- I know the planning board members have to go to training for hours every year. I don't know how knowledgeable and familiar they are with this new wave of environmental, uh, oriented laws uh, that can be passed. Um, uh, the loc- the waterfront advisory committee, I don't know how engaged they are yet. Uh, probably not much since there's been nothing specifically proposed. I don't know how much training they have. I don't know whether Tal, you've been, um, you know, following these model laws that, that are being proposed and advised for municipalities to consider. But I just, it just occurs to me that it might be helpful for us to have maybe n- the next month or the following month of, 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 at one of our meetings, invite Claire Party, invite Maggie Morey, um, invite our code enforcement officer, invite, uh, Jason. Um, maybe bring in somebody from DEC or Department of State or some of the environmental groups. Have a little, you know, town hall, have some questions. Uh, get a sense, get a collect, a, a sense of our community of like w- w- what, what we can do, what we should do. Uh, get a bit of a master plan for that very sensitive area to the west and south of, um, uh, of, uh, Brick Row. I don't, um, I, I, I don't feel, I don't have a sense that, I, I feel r- right now that we're very much at risk of being uh, sort of a passive, uh, participant in what the developers of those property. I mean, some control and management, uh, we have great planning board, uh, great committees. But a little bit, you know, at the mercy of people who are potentially more sophisticated than we are. And so I'm just, again, I don't have a good answer, uh, or, or, or even a solid proposal other than what I said about just getting everybody together to talk about it. But I am concerned and I want to raise that concern.
Okay. Uh,
That strikes me as something that the comprehensive plan committee could be looking at. Because what you're talking about are changes in our law, especially in our zoning law, um, with respect to those types of controls. And certainly that is the area that they would be looking at, um, including any potential new laws um, that might be out there. These models, I've not heard of that, Jo- Josh, I have to say. So, yeah, I, I'd be glad to learn about that from, from them as well.
Great idea. And I see Todd is on the, on the call this evening. And, uh, I'm the liaison, as you know, to the implementation committee. We're have it, we have our first meeting coming up next week. Um, we haven't fully defined our, uh, mission yet. So, um, those are, those are some great suggestions. I see Todd is, is coming online here.
You're muted, Todd.
You're muted, uh, Todd, you're muted.
Thanks, sorry guys. Uh, no, Josh, that's a great idea. We've been listening to the whole meeting and we've been paying attention. Josh, I'm gonna add that to the, to the agenda. We've got so many things that we have to go over next week. But this is a fantastic, uh, agenda item for our, our budget, be our meeting next week. That's fantastic.
Thank you so much. That's it, Amy. I'm done.
That's a good place for you guys to get started. I'm, I'm excited to hear what you come up with about all that. Um, that'd be good to learn. Um, okay, thank you, Josh. Uh, MJ, did you have anything?
I just have a couple of things.
Okay.
Uh, the, um, the resolution that was passed by the county regarding the fuel oil bid.
Hmm.
Can we make a, a motion or a resolution to piggyback on that and for the village?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's usually what we do with their, um, fuel oil most of the time. Since we have Botini this year anyway, it's easier just to stick with them. So can somebody make a motion or would they be interested in making a motion to piggyback with the county for the Botini fuel oil bid? On motion?
I'll second.
Excellent. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?
Thank you. I think that's it. Oh, does anybody know if the town has adopted the comprehensive plan yet?
Uh, they're, they're having a public hearing Monday night.
Okay.
I have one other thing. Could you, um, when you send that off for Ed's retirement, can you just email him that it's all done?
Yes, I will.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, MJ?
That's it.
Alright, Tal, did you have anything?
No, we've covered pretty much everything I'm working on.
Yeah.
I, I, I have a question, sorry. Um, where, where are we with the, uh, sale of the building?
The same. Nothing, there's been no movement as of yet. I, 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 like I said, I, I had a, an initial meeting with, with Supervisor Butler right before the election. Um, and I have reached out to him to get together with Gail and me to, um, to sort of reconvene on that, because I feel like it's just sort of been sitting. So, uh, there's been no movement, but there has been an attempt at making movement, if that makes sense. I've reached out, so we're trying, um, to move forward with that. But right now.
Good enough for me. Thank you.
Nothing. Um, so now it's to me. And I'm pretty sure we talked about everything that I could think of to talk about tonight. Um, I think we covered it all. Budget, everything's good. Um, yeah, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
Me.
Thank you. And can I get a second?
Me.
Okay. All in favor of dinnertime? Opposed? Alright, thank you so much, everyone.
Thanks.
Good meeting.
Yeah.
Bye.
Bye.
Good night.